Take your seats. Let's get going. How nice to see you all. It's nice to see some of you in your seats. Well, it's very nice to see you all. I'll miss you tomorrow. It'll be very sad, right? I wonder if you'll say the same about us. So we are on the verge of agreeing something very significant. Thank you all very much for the hard work this week. Everyone in the secretariat, my co-chair and I, everyone who's been working on this for so many years is incredibly grateful for your efforts. Thank you. And I'm absolutely certain that we will wake up tomorrow. Very pleased with the work that we've done this week. But there is a lot to do, so we will get started very quickly. Yesterday, we met in the COW and we mandated two contact groups to meet in the evening. That was very mean of us, wasn't it? So let's start with hearing reports back from those contact groups. So Contact Group 4 met first to discuss paragraph 3 and non-monetary benefit sharing. Thank you very much to Nik Nicholas of Antigua and Barbuda and Salima Kempenyer of Belgium for leading those discussions. And Neka from Antigua and Barbuda is going to give us a report. Maikta Antiga, please.
So much, Mr. Co-Chair. My colleague Salima and I had the pleasure of co-chairing this contact group last night. The contact group's mandate was to discuss a revised text based on paragraph 3 of the non-paper which was projected on the screen. The contact group met from 7:30 PM until 9:30 PM. Delegates started with a review of the text in order to ensure that the spirit and ideas from their interventions from the morning COW session were captured accurately. They agreed that the text was a good basis for discussion. The group then discussed the structure of the ideas in the text and decided to reorganize it into a clearer structure of who, what, and then how. Given the limited time available and the divergence of ideas, the co-facilitators explained that the group's priority should be to ensure that all views were clearly captured. The contact group then tasked the co-chairs of the COW with reformulating the text to reflect their interventions. The spirit in the room was very cooperative and open. Thank you so much, Mr. Co-Chair.
Asking the co-chairs. We had taken that tasking and are working on that for you now. Next, we'd like to hear from the same co-chairs on the outcomes of Contact Group 2, which met directly after Contact Group 4. And that was a brief exchange on paragraph 11 and enclosure C. Please give the floor to Belgium for the update.
Thank you. My battery is low, so I'll... My colleague Neka and I also had the pleasure to co-facilitate the discussion. For this session, the group considered paragraph 11 on dispersment, including enclosure C. The group emphasized on exploring the indicative elements that could serve as a good basis to develop the formula that would be used to calculate country allocations dispersed by the fund. Delegates listed some of the missing elements, metrics, and criteria that could be included in a possible formula. Parties raised questions about the timeline to develop the formula and considered the possible subsequent process. The short time available to develop a working formula was also discussed, with some delegates expressing a strong desire to agree on a formula at COP16 and task a group with improving this formula during the inter-sessional period leading to COP17. We concluded the meeting indicating that all amendments and changes suggested during the meeting would be reflected in the upcoming CRP, which we have done. We'd like to thank you, co-chairs, for entrusting us with the task of leading this discussion, and to all the delegates for pushing through on this topic last night. And while tired, but as always, in a constructive and cooperative spirit. Thank you, co-chairs.
Co-chairs from last night, and to all the co-chairs who've facilitated us this week. And thank you to everybody for working so hard in those contact groups. Thank you. So we will resume our reading on the second version of the non-paper. We will pick up where we broke off yesterday. After this session of the COW is complete, we will produce a CRP which will be tabled for consideration at the second meeting of the COW today and which will then be forwarded to plenary. We have to finish reviewing this non-paper this morning. That means that we won't need to move deliberately, but quickly. We won't be able to hear from everybody on every paragraph. We are almost certainly going to have to cut the list short at some points, so please prioritize speaking only to those issues that it is critical that you see reflected in the text. There's no need to engage in lengthy discussions about particular wording formulations. We just need to capture the final and additional ideas you need to see in the CRP. And do forgive us if we keep moving you on. There's a lot to cover, but I think it'll be worth it by the end of the day. So I'm sure we can count on your good spirit. We're looking forward to our day together. Let's get to work. So paragraph 12 of the non-paper version 2 that was circulated on the 14th. You've had several discussions in contact groups already on paragraph 12. Paragraph 12 also contains options already. So I hope that we'll be able to move quite quickly through a final exchange on paragraph 12, reflect any absolutely critical additional ideas, and then we'll move on. So can I open the floor, please, for comments on paragraph 12? Canada, you have the floor.
...to the magnificent seven and everyone else. We recognize that there's very little time now between now and COP16 to explore the technical details related to allocation of funding. And it's also clear from this meeting that countries have different priorities for such a negotiation. We know from the negotiation of the GBF fund that it was designed to accommodate a DSI window which could be negotiated and set up in a relatively short period of time. Given this, it's very important from our perspective that we retain reference to the GEF and GBF fund within option A, as it was reflected in the first draft of the non-paper. To be clear, this is still under discussion. We would request that the text removed from the end of paragraph 12, option A, starting with "such as the JEFF" through the GBFF, to be reinserted into this draft. Thank you.
Thank you, Canada. And to be clear, that would be re-added into option A only or into option... It's just because I recall it was covered in option A and option B in the previous formulation. Canada is indicating that the... So the text would be the reference to the JEFF and the GBFF. That's the reference that was in the original non-paper, non-paper version 1, and that would be reinserted into option A. Thank you, Canada. So let me hear from Egypt and then Japan. Egypt, you have the floor.
We propose to add at the end of option A and B the following wording in accordance with the decisions of the Conference of the Parties and be under the authority of and accountable to the Conference of the Party. In option B, we propose to strike in the fifth phrase, starting from "should". So such entity we delete operate according to internationally accepted fiscal standard and so that it reads such entity should provide annual reports through focal points. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Egypt. Please, could you read out... I think both proposals would be helpful. So there's language that you're adding on ensuring that the entity would be accountable to the COP, so if you could just read out that one first, that would be very helpful.
In accordance with the decision of the Conference of the Parties and be under the authority of and accountable to the Conference of the Party. Thank you.
Egypt, we... Both option A and option B. And then your proposed change to option B... Please, could you repeat that? Sorry, thank you.
To strike out in the line starting from paragraph 10, so we remove operate according to internationally agreed fiscal standard and so that the phrase reads such entity should provide annual reports through national focal points. Thank you.
That's very clear, so we'll put that into square brackets. Thank you, Egypt. So we have Japan, Australia, and the EU. Japan, you have the floor.
That's... We have textual comment for paragraph 12. Third line from the bottom, it says fiduciary standards and provide annual reports through national focal points on activities supported by the funds. After that, we propose the addition of and be audited by the international entity because we are thus creating importance to transparency and accountability for this paragraph. For the same reason, we propose the title of enclosure C to be changed to possible elements for formula rather than initial formula, and we should focus more on risk and vulnerability of biodiversity rather than richness. Thank you.
You, Japan, so we can reflect the suggestion on auditing in option B. That's very clear. And there was a good discussion, I think, about the title of the enclosure C yesterday, and we've captured those. Thank you. And Australia, you have the floor.
Co-Chair, and g'day, everybody. I would like to support the insertion by Canada. We think that having a reference to the JEFF slash GBFF as it was in the original documents is really important to acknowledge that that should still be on the table, which may very well help us with the criteria and formula that we need for dispersments. I don't know what internationally accepted fiduciary standards means, but it sounds pretty important, so we'd like to retain that. Just so we can double-check. And yes, thank you.
Thank you, Australia, and g'day indeed. So that's the end of the list. Thank you all very much. Let's move to paragraph Brazil. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. It's just that we really do not think that the JEFF and the GBF should be mentioned. I think we don't... We were... Our understanding is that we are trying to discuss on the basis of principles and to ascertain which kind of institutions could obey to the principles that we are discussing. This is not, at least in my understanding, institution-based discussion. Otherwise, if we're going to discuss the relative value and advantages and disadvantages of JEFF, we could certainly spend a lot of time here. We're certainly willing to do that. We've made it very clear the reservation that we had in this regard. I would also like to recall that the advisory committee will meet in a few days and will be very attentive to our discussions in this regard. So we have said very clear that we do not want to prejudge in any way the way this discussion is going, and we want this discussion to be based on principles, on the concrete and actual needs that we're going to discuss and agree to, and not on institutions. If we're going that way, then maybe we would need some extra language in there to reflect clearly the reservations that my country and many other countries in this room have expressed about JEFF and the GBF and the way it's going. Colleagues, we are in 2024. This year marks the 80th anniversary of the Bretton Woods Institutions. It's time for the Bretton Woods Institutions to start to retire. My father wasn't even born when Bretton Woods took place. And the JEFF governance system, it's a direct reflection of the governance system of the Bretton Woods Institutions. It's time to move on. We are tired of listening to the same arguments all over. We heard very similar arguments on the need to maintain existing structures and so on, and to avoid etc., etc., etc. Last year, during the very tough negotiation of the GBF fund in Brasilia, and it wasn't a pleasant negotiation. So it's really very frustrating and concerning. So it's really very frustrating and concerning to hear the same insistence on maintaining express reference to JEFF as if JEFF hasn't been the target of many, many, many several consistent and well-founded arguments and criticism by my country and several other countries, and that should be reflected adequately in the in the text. We mention expressly for those institutions to be removed. Otherwise, we are going to be discussing the relative advantages and disadvantages of the institutions and not the principles, and we should be focused on the principles. Our party is really willing to have the discussion right now because we certainly are, and we certainly think this is a very important and crucial discussion. Can JEFF adequately attend to the principles and the needs that we are discussing here? We do not think it can, and we have said that many times, and we have provided arguments and reasons for that, and we can do that certainly that again. But we cannot pretend that this discussion is not going on, and the advisory committee should receive a very precise information that there are serious grave and consistent concerns by many parties about about JEFF. We are not happy at all with the possibility of you discussing that JEFF will be will be the host institution. Again, we should discuss the principles. If we're going to discuss institutions, let discuss it. Let us discuss institutions right now then. And then we open a separate item of the agenda just to discuss the relative merits of the JEFF and advantages and compare what has been happening since the foundation of the GBF. Are we happy with the amount of money that the GBF is receiving? Are we happy with the way it took so long for the advisory committee, for the assistant body in the JEFF to be to be approved in the last JEFF Council meeting? Took a lot of time. We're not happy at all. So I'm in your hands, sir. Are we having the discussion right now? Because maybe it would be time for us to have it. Thank you.
Brazil, we have a long list. I don't propose that we embark on a comprehensive discussion about which possible institution could meet the either the requirements laid out in option A or option B. That is clearly, you know, a subject of discussion for the ACRM that we'll meet next week. We'll be relaying to them very clearly the conversations that we've had. We will attend that meeting as co-chairs, so we will be able to reflect, you know, the depth of discussion that we've had on that issue. We do, of course, need to come up with a textual solution for the way that we reflect the difference of opinions here, and so I very much welcome suggestions in that regard. India, you have the floor.
Just want to highlight the state on the same issue in the opening statement that we gave, that we were, you know, a bit concerned about using the same funds. So we had suggested that there should be a different fund other than the JEFF, which is a donor fund, because we need different accounting principles. And the fact that this is a mandatory contribution coming from the users of DSI on public on genetic resources from public databases. So we would very much want this to be separately accounted for, separately, you know, administered. And in that sense, we support the Brazilian proposal of not linking it with any earmarked fund which exists today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, India. Let's hear from the UK and then the EU.
Very much, Mr. Co-chair, and good morning, everybody. Listening to both Canada and Brazil, and also reflecting on previous discussions that we had on the reference to the JEFF in option A, I think what we previously said was that it would be helpful to separate out the who and the how. So perhaps we could take the reference to the JEFF back out of option A, and then we could have a separate paragraph that includes the JEFF, which may be one institution that could be considered as a host but alongside others, and we could think about some language to balance that. And then that would help transfer the message to the advisory committee, and we can look forward to the outcome from their discussions. Thank you, Mr. Co-chair.
Can I hear from the EU and Norway, please?
Thank you, Co-chair, and good morning, colleagues. It has been a long-held position of the EU and its member states that we are skeptical about the further fragmentation of the international financial landscape in support of funding for nature and biodiversity. We are having a very robust conversation in the Advisory Committee for Resource Mobilization and in the process towards a decision on COP, on resource mobilization, on this issue. We, however, feel that there are two discussion tracks with very distinct mandates, and I would support those who say that in this open-ended working group on DSI, we are to discuss the principles and the main features that we see for the multilateral mechanism and the global fund attached to it. And we are to deliver those principles and features to the Advisory Committee on Resource Mobilization that will actually investigate which could be entities that would be able to host such a mechanism and the fund with such features. Therefore, although we were clearly comfortable with the original version of your non-paper, we're also comfortable with the last version of paragraph 12. And I think we would agree that having an exchange here on what are the mutual preferences for hosting is not a good use of our time. We do believe that the JEFF and the GBF are financial mechanisms that are in conformity with the criteria and the spirit and letter of Article 2021 of the CBD, but that's not the discussion we should have here. I think that we therefore would support Brazil in its plea not to enter into this discussion here, to keep the text of paragraph 12 simple and to deliver a good material to the ACRM. I think the ACRM doesn't need to be reminded by a paragraph in this text that there are a variety of options for hosting of the financial mechanism. I think in that sense, we I would like to move on and have a simple and straightforward paragraph 12 as much as possible. Thank you.
Much European Union. I'm going to take just a couple more, and then we'll decide on the way forward. So Norway, please, and then Argentina.
Thank you, Mr. Co-chair. We would support the suggestion, the inclusion put forward by Canada. We would like to see mentioning of the JEFF and the GBFF in the text. But we do respect the plea that we don't need to have a discussion here about Bretton Woods or about, I mean, further deliberations, which will happen in the in the meeting next week in the committee. That's fine, although we do think that, you know, this community here, this meeting has proficiency on DSI, and the committee might not have that. But we do respect that that conversation is to be had next week. That's that's fine. We would like to point out, though, that the JEFF is the interim and ongoing financial mechanism of the CBD. And as the EU pointed out, it does meet the criteria we have set for the operational entity. We would also like to point out that, in our view, the GBFF is an existing mechanism. And if speed is important here in this process to set up the system, indeed, we think it is, the GBFF might be the best alternative that we have at our disposal. Thank you, Mr. Co-chair.
I'd like to hear from Argentina.
On this matter, I would prefer the paragraph as we are seeing it now without the specific mention. I appreciate UK's proposal as an attempt to move us forward to some agreement and to separate this, but I do feel for that to be an adequate option, it would need to actually include all the possible options. So I think if we are going to consider including some funds there, then we're going to start a discussion of on a list of whatever we want to see there. I don't think it is in the interest of time and then that we are already giving information to the ACRM on the criteria and then that parallel discussion that's going on there on the actual fund and on the possibilities. So that is enough information, I think. I think we could be here again the rest of the day discussing if to include one reference or other reference, and I'm not comfortable with that. And I don't think I would be comfortable with whatever outcome of that discussion would be in terms of text. So I think it's better to just not include it, considering that what we have said here is enough criteria to then later on identify what is the correct if if option A would potentially and eventually be the one chosen to host that. So that is like a second. Now we're talking about, I agree with with the idea that this is on the criteria, and then it's a different information, a different discussion, what is the actual host. But I don't think we have the time to address that here, and I don't think we could end up with a text that we are happy with. So I would propose that we just do not include that at this time and be able to move forward with more other substantive matters. Thank you.
There will be a meeting of the ACRM. The ACRM is charged with discussing options for the host of the DSI fund, and in particular, whether the GBFF or the JEFF could serve as that host. There's no need for us to have a lengthy conversation on that now. We have identified a number of options for functions that the host could perform, and we're going to pass those to the ACRM. At the moment, the paper is silent on the question of which host could perform those functions. I'm going to come to the colleagues who are asking for a reference to the JEFF to be inserted. So I think that's Canada, Australia, and Norway, and indicate whether there's any flexibility in their position. Given that there will be a discussion in the ACRM next week, would it be possible in this version of the non-paper not to reference the JEFF or the GBFF? I'll give you a moment to think.
You'd like to retain it in brackets, please.
Thank you, Canada. On that basis, which we know will not be acceptable to a number of other parties, I'm going to ask for a small group to meet over lunch. So we'll come back to you with suggestions for times and venues in a moment. But you will be tasked with negotiating in a small group setting to try and identify how you want to handle this problem. There's a number of options. There's, of course, no reference to any host, or there's a paragraph recognizing the mandate of the ACRM and that there are a number of potential hosts, but we simply don't have time to do that now. So I'll ask you to convene over lunch, and you will have to report verbally back to the second meeting of the COW so that we can reflect that in the CRP. Thank you very much, everyone. So please lower your flags.
Just that we ask for your guidance regarding the kind of discussion we have, and we took careful note what has been said. Norway actually engaged in substantive debate, so we feel obliged to answer to that substantive comments. Norway and other parties also mentioned that they think the JEFF obeys to the criteria set out in decision 15/9. So we are already engaged in that discussion. I'm sorry to take that, but I can't not to mention that from our point of view, JEFF does not attend to the criteria set out in decision 15/9. We have mentioned that several times, just to say that the very first word in there is efficient, and we ask ourselves how 12% administrative costs can ever be efficient for us, just to give an example. And as regards Bretton Woods, this is not a theoretical, philosophical, or historical matter. The Bretton Woods Institution means that there is a much higher weight to the donor countries in the JEFF Council and the GBFF Council than in here, any other UN body. Brazil, Colombia, and Ecuador are required to share a seat of the fund's board. They are three of the 17 mega-diverse countries in the world. The Democratic Republic of Congo are forced to share a seat with six other countries. Indonesia is forced to share a seat with 16 other countries. You're talking about some of the most mega-diverse countries in the world. This is a convention on biodiversity. So we are seriously discussing a fund with deals of biodiversity where some of the most mega-diverse countries in the world won't have a seat of their own, but all the donor countries will have a seat of their own? Are we seriously discussing that? Because that's the kind of discussion that we need to have when we're discussing governance. And as concerned, speed, that was an element that Norway mentioned, that very same argument we heard in Brasilia last year, is speed, speed, speed. We were in a hurry in Brasilia last year. We're still in a hurry. We'll always be in a hurry. If we want to move forward, we want to have new ideas, we want to have a major breakthrough, we must have the courage to abandon structures that do not fulfill their mandate or that should be a structure that have become obsolete with time. That's why we need a dedicated fund under the authority and the guidance, effective authority and guidance to the of the COP and be accountable to it. We have lengthy discussions about that in Nairobi, and we will have lengthy discussions about that in Cali. So all of this should be reflected in the document. Thank you, sir.
So we will come back to you later with some practical arrangements about the small group, which will consider how to address the question of potential fund hosts in this text. If you're on the list to intervene on the question of fund host, please lower your hand. We won't take any further interventions on that point. If you'd like to come in to request an additional idea to be reflected in paragraph 12, please do keep your hand up. And so I see with an additional idea Cuba, you have the floor.
Gracias, co-chair. Cuando se discutió este paráfo en el grupo de contacto, había un, por lo menos yo recuerdo, un sentimiento generalizado de que los asuntos relacionados con el desembolso debían tener un párrafo separado desde administración. Yo creo que habría que pensar en un doce terc que fuera específicamente sobre administración y ahí verter todos estos elementos relacionados con la institución que finalmente administrará el fondo. Es una primera propuesta. Quiero decir que la última línea de la opción A y la línea de la segunda de la segunda oración de la opción B pasaría a este doce terc. En segundo lugar, es un poco difícil de entender la frase internacional acético fiduciario standards. Yo hice la pregunta a mi Ministerio de Economía y no lo conocen. Y aquí estaríamos hablando de un reporte de compliance. O sea, es una frase muy seria. Entonces nosotros tenemos cierta experiencia y lenguaje acordado en todo lo que es review and effectiveness. Yo creo que podríamos buscar las opciones dentro del propio convenio y no establecer nuevos criterios que nos obliguen a seguir. qui nous obligent à continuer à étudier d'autres sujets, non? La provision annuelle du rapport, cela peut dépendre de beaucoup de choses. Normalement, les rapports ont un cycle un peu plus étendu, trois ans, quatre ans. Je crois que la fréquence est un autre des sujets qui pouvait être... Et l'ultime oration de l'option B est aussi un sujet d'administration. C'est-à-dire la capacité, la possibilité de choisir si une entité intermédiaire se implique. C'est-à-dire que ce n'est pas, comme je le vois dans ce paragraphe, lié au déploiement, pour pouvoir concentrer la discussion sur si c'est par projet ou par assignation directe ou même prendre en compte une suggestion que j'ai fait, c'est-à-dire travailler les deux options. C'est-à-dire que la discussion du déploiement est beaucoup plus riche que ce qui est reflété aujourd'hui et la discussion sur l'administration est beaucoup plus complexe que ce qui est reflété aujourd'hui. Merci.
Merci Cuba, c'est une suggestion très utile pour réarranger quelques paragraphes et quelques bonnes réflexions dans le texte aussi. Merci. Donc le dernier speaker sur cela est l'UE et puis nous allons passer à l'Union européenne. Vous avez le plan.
Président, je suis conscient de votre instruction de ne pas discuter de fonds ou non-fonds. Et je ne vais pas faire cela, mais je veux avoir plus de clarté sur le mandat du groupe de contact ou du petit groupe. Parce que je pense que ce groupe a besoin de instructions très attentives sur ce à discuter et non à discuter. Je pense que le mandat de ce groupe est de discuter du comment et non du quoi. Donc je pense que, dans un sens, ce que nous avons dans le texte répond beaucoup au comment et nous pourrions en fait plus elaborer sur le comment. Mais désolé, je m'excuse pour avoir tort. Nous ne discutons pas du qui. Donc je pense que le seul résultat que je peux voir du petit groupe est une liste longue de toutes les institutions concebables mondiales qui pourraient être hostes à celui-ci. Et je me demande si le Secrétaire ne pouvait compiler une telle liste et en fait la mettre à notre disposition parce que je ne vois aucune utilité dans l'exchange sur qui pourrait être hosté le fonds parce que c'est pas ce que nous sommes supposés faire. Et je pense que au lieu d'impliquer dans la discussion que Brésil semble intéressé à impliquer, je pense que nous devrions en fait économiser notre temps. Donc si vous pouvez, s'il vous plaît, fournissez plus de clarté sur ce que vous demanderiez au petit groupe et qui va le diriger pour faire et quel est le résultat désiré. Parce que je pense que si c'est une discussion qui est hors du mandat de ce travail, de ce groupe, alors je pense que nous aurions des réservations sur le valeur ajoutée de ce groupe. Merci.
Merci beaucoup, EU. Donc nous vous renverrons vers la fin de la réunion avec une description de ce que le petit groupe fera et les instructions du petit groupe seront dans le mandat des groupes de travail établis par la COP. Merci. Passons à 12 bis, s'il vous plaît. Donc réflexions à haut niveau et idées supplémentaires qui doivent être captées dans le paragraphe 12 bis. Merci. Très bien. Passons à 13. Paragraphe 13, Égypte, vous avez le plan. Merci.
Merci, monsieur Cocheur. C'est juste pour proposer de remplacer ce qui devrait être fourni par, qui devrait être publié. Je veux dire, ils ne sont pas les mêmes. Les IPLCS peuvent entrer dans la information, mais vous ne devriez pas le partager avec un tiers. C'est la façon dont nous le voyons. Je veux dire, donc il ne devrait pas être publié sauf s'ils sont d'accord pour que ça soit public. Merci.
Interessante distinction. Merci, Égypte. Union européenne, Canada et Colombie. EU, merci.
Président, merci à Égypte pour leur proposition, qui fait en fait encore plus clair pourquoi je dois faire une proposition. Je pense que de notre point de vue, il est clair que nous devons respecter les droits des peuples indigènes et des communautés locales sur le savoir traditionnel associé aux ressources génétiques et aux ressources génétiques. Cela, cependant, et dans la vision de ce que nous discutons ici, ne s'étend pas au DSI dans les bases de données publiques. Donc j'ai une suggestion très simple. Supprimer dans la deuxième ligne et les données relatives à elles. Et je pense que en ce qui concerne la proposition égyptienne, nous aimerions aussi mettre ça entre parenthèses. Merci.
Et Colombie.
Merci. Tout d'abord, nous avons soumis un peu de langage à insérer sur la Déclaration des Nations Unies sur les droits des peuples indigènes plus tôt. Nous ne le voyons pas reflété et nous pensons que c'est une omission qui devrait être rectifiée si possible. Donc ça lit : "Le mécanisme multilatéral doit respecter les droits des peuples indigènes, y compris ceux établis dans la Déclaration des Nations Unies sur les droits des peuples indigènes et, si approprié, des communautés locales." Deuxièmement, Canada supporte les principes de l'FPIC comme ils sont liés aux droits des individus indigènes. Cependant, nous considérons que les discussions sont actuellement en cours concernant le cadre pour la protection du savoir traditionnel à Wipo. Donc nous recommanderions... Nous sommes heureux de la formulation de l'UE en fait, mais avec l'insertion de la Déclaration de l'ONU. Merci.
Canada, nous pouvons faire cela. Disons à Colombie et puis Norway. Colombie.
Bonjour, Colombie. Colombie veut répéter la demande qu'elle a fait en écrit, d'inclure la population afrodescendante dans le langage. Je vais lire en anglais comment serait la formulation. "Le mécanisme multilatéral respecte les droits des peuples indigènes, des personnes afriquaises descendantes et des communautés locales." Et le reste du paragraphe serait de la même manière. Merci beaucoup.
EU, Colombie, Norway et puis Brésil. Norway.
Merci, monsieur Cocheur. Donc sur 13, nous sommes d'accord sur la truffe du texte. Nous sommes d'accord que le mécanisme devrait respecter les droits des peuples indigènes et des communautés locales. Nous sommes aussi d'accord sur l'FPIC. Ce que nous ne sommes pas d'accord sur est que le mécanisme et les bases de données publiques devraient polir, dans un sens, des données liées à l'FPIC. Donc comme l'a proposé l'UE, nous demanderions aussi la supprimer de la formulation et des données relatives à elles. Merci, monsieur Cocheur.
Merci Norway, c'est bien compris. Brésil et puis Inde. Brésil.
Bien sûr, nous avons exprimé notre soutien pour ce paragraphe et pour le message général et très important que il envoie. Donc nous sommes assez inquiets que un message que, selon notre perception, a reçu un accord général ici pourrait souffrir de l'ajout de nombreux clauses qui pourraient donner l'impression que nous ne supportons pas. Je pense que tous les partis soutiennent la truffe générale de ce paragraphe, mais nous pourrions avoir des discussions sur les spécifiques. Nous avons noté la proposition canadienne comme nous l'avons déjà mentionné. Nous pensons que c'est une discussion très délicate que nous avons à faire à l'intérieur de l'HA et dans d'autres instances de cette convention. Nous pensons que les communautés locales ont des droits et nous ne pensons pas que nous devrions être exclusifs ou nous nous présenterons de quelque sorte comme si certains groupes sont plus importants que d'autres. Je ne m'investirai pas dans les discussions ici, mais aussi prenant note de la proposition de Colombie et essayant d'éviter plus de matériel sur la Champs-Élysées que nécessaire. Mon suggestion me permettrait que nous puissions avoir un footnote sur toutes les références aux individus indigènes et aux communautés locales dans tout ce document et disant que ceci est un dépassement des discussions sur les formulations que nous pourrions avoir à Calais. Sinon, nous devrions répéter chaque fois que les individus indigènes et les communautés locales sont mentionnés. Que nous avons... Je pense que les inquiétudes prononcées par Canada et par Colombie sont applicables à d'autres parties du texte. Donc juste pour éviter d'avoir un texte en coulisses, peut-être que nous pourrions travailler sur un footnote ou quelque chose comme ça. Merci. Mais nous pensons que le plus important est de préserver... C'est que quelqu'un qui n'est pas ici lit ce paragraphe et n'a pas l'impression que il n'y a pas d'agreement général parce que je pense qu'il y a un accord général sur la ligne. Donc il devrait être écrit très attentivement pour refléter cela. Merci.
Merci beaucoup, Brésil. C'est une suggestion très utile en effet. Disons à Inde, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, co-chef. Juste pour mentionner ici que la dernière partie de la phrase où vous parlez de consentement informé et préalable, puis il y a déjà une décision de la COP, COP 15/4, section C, par 7a, qui qualifie ce libre consentement préalable et informé, avec le... Vous savez, si je peux juste lire, "Incluant leur participation complète et efficace à la prise de décision en accord avec la législation nationale et les instruments internationaux, y compris la Déclaration des Nations Unies sur les droits..." Donc quand nous sommes sélectivement, au lieu de choisir sélectivement, je suggère que après cela, s'il vous plaît inclure toute la chose comme la décision de la COP 15/4. Merci, président.
Merci beaucoup, Inde. C'est bien compris. Je vais entendre à Colombie et puis nous allons passer à autre. Colombie, vous avez le plan.
Merci, Seigneur Président. Je voudrais se référer à la proposition de Brésil d'inclure le langage proposé par Colombie comme une note au pied du document et insister sur la demande de Colombie que le langage soit inclus dans le document. Merci beaucoup.
Merci, Colombie. C'est très bien compris. Merci beaucoup, collègues. Nous allons passer à 14. Nous faisons de très bons progressos et je vais passer à mon co-chef.
Merci et bonjour encore. Je pense que nous avons réussi à passer trois paragraphe et j'espère que cela continuera à ce rythme avec le reste des paragraphe et être capable de conclure en bon temps pour le CRP. Maintenant, nous avançons à 14. Et je pense que c'est un paragraphe qui a été amélioré en fonction des commentaires que nous avons eu dans les versions précédentes du non-papier. Et nous avons essayé de refléter autant que possible. Donc si il y a encore besoin d'amélioration dans ce paragraphe, je ferai le plan pour cela. Je vois qu'il y a l'UE suivie par Brésil puis l'UK.
En effet, c'est un langage amélioré. Nous trouvons juste que la dernière partie de la phrase pourrait bénéficier d'une clarification plus approfondie. Donc je vais lire un changement très court en ce sens. Donc il devrait lire et ne devrait pas se produire une duplication de obligations de partager les bénéfices de l'utilisation du DSI. Parce que sinon, le langage qui est là n'est pas si clair. Donc la dernière partie du paragraphe devrait lire : "ne devrait pas se produire une duplication de obligations de partager les bénéfices de l'utilisation du DSI." J'espère que c'est clair.
Clair et cela aide à améliorer le paragraphe. Je donne maintenant le plan à Brésil puis l'UK. Brésil.
Juste pour suggérer que dans la deuxième ligne, ils devraient être en alignement avec le mécanisme multilatéral. Ils devraient être compatibles avec le mécanisme multilatéral. Merci.
Merci, Brésil, pour l'amélioration supplémentaire du paragraphe. Je donne maintenant le plan à l'Angleterre.
J'ai juste quelques improvements supplémentaires au-dessus de ce qui a déjà été suggéré. Donc à la base, il pourrait lire où les partis sont mis en place, national. Et puis le changement serait... Il ferait lire "Accès national et mesures de partage des bénéfices pour l'utilisation du DSI". Ça se sent un peu plus streamliné. Et puis à la fin, après la introduction de l'UE, le nouveau texte de l'UE, je ajouterais à la fin du paragraphe : "par le mécanisme multilatéral".
Merci, bien comprise. Et je pense que tous les commentaires ont vraiment amélioré le texte de la version que nous avions soumise. Donc merci beaucoup. Je vois le Japon puis l'UE.
Merci, madame Muthia. Juste pour être sûr, nous avons une petite suggestion pour le paragraphe 14. Où les partis mettent en place les mesures nationales. Ça semble comme s'ils allaient les mettre en place. Nous voulons juste être sûrs qu'il ait un rétroactif. C'est pourquoi je propose des partis avec des mesures nationales sur l'accès et la partage des bénéfices. Donc strike out "où" et "mettent en place", puis insérer "avec" après "partis". Merci.
Merci, le Japon. C'est bien noté. Je vais à l'UE.
Président, nous devons plus réfléchir à l'insertion UK à la fin du paragraphe, donc s'il vous plaît mettez ça entre parenthèses. Je ne suis pas sûr, c'est terriblement utile de notre point de vue. Merci.
Merci, l'UE. La proposition UK vers la fin sera mise entre parenthèses pour plus de réflexion comme indiqué. Avec cela, je ne vois pas d'autre demande pour le plan, donc nous allons à 14 bis. Je donne le plan pour le paragraphe 14 bis. Je vois Égypte, vous avez le plan. Parle du Japon.
Madame Cocheur, nous avons déjà proposé de langage sur comment définir le champ entre les différents acteurs internationaux d'accès et de partage des bénéfices et l'instrument et ce n'est pas bien reflété. Le problème ici est que nous ne voulons pas que certains pays aient juste un accord entre eux qui n'est pas complètement aligné avec la CBD et puis nous disons que nous devons coopérer avec eux. C'est mon seul souci. Peut-être que nous avons certains pays qui mettent un accord entre eux et ce n'est pas aligné avec nous. Doit-nous toujours coopérer avec eux, même si c'est contre les objectifs de la CBD? Et cela doit être souligné. Donc le langage lit comme suit : à la fin de la liste 14, "où un instrument d'accès et de partage international des bénéfices", "développez un mécanisme multilatéral de partage des bénéfices pour le DSI qui est cohérent et ne marche pas encontre les objectifs de la CBD et du protocole Nagoya", "le mécanisme multilatéral de partage des bénéfices de la CBD pour le DSI ne s'applique pas aux partis ou aux partis à l'instrument spécialisé en ce qui concerne les informations de séquence digitale spécifiques couvertes par et pour le but de l'instrument spécialisé".
D'autres additions? Bien comprises. Ok. Ok. Donc je vais maintenant passer à l'UE suivie par le Japon puis le Japon. EU.
Merci, président. Encore une fois, ce langage a été amélioré et bien réfléchi. Il commence à refléter le spirit de la discussion. Cependant, je pense que cela pourrait encore bénéficier d'une clarification plus approfondie. Donc nous avons quelques changements à suggérer. Dans la première ligne... with. And then after, we think it's sufficient to say international access and benefit sharing instruments, we delete associated with the use of DSI until coherence. And then at the end, in the last sentence, after this could be facilitated, we add by enhanced cooperation and information exchanged amongst the governing bodies of such instruments. We recognize the spirit and the intent of the Norwegian proposal, which is reflected in the reference to collective arrangements. We still have numerous questions about the practicality and the formalities and the mechanism. So we, while agreeing with the intent, we don't think that it is currently fit for being included in the sense, because collective arrangement sounds like there would be a legally binding agreement between different instruments, which we find impossible. So that would be bracketed for now, but we're happy to continue the discussion on how the interaction between different instruments could be continued. And we also would like to bracket the Egyptian proposal, which we have to study, which I think is not in line with what we would see, how we would see this functioning. Thank you.
Thank you, EU, for the proposals, and also, I think we put in brackets the proposal by Egypt as requested, and the one that was towards the end, suggested earlier by Norway for further interpretation where needed. I'll now give the floor to Japan and then Jordan, Japan.
In the third line, after mutual supportiveness and coherence, we propose the addition of and avoiding duplicative payments, because we really need to make sure there is no duplicative payments with other ABS instruments. Thank you.
Thank you, Japan. That has been captured towards that end, and I think this part you're referring to is the one that the EU proposed to delete in the way of capturing that. I'll now give the floor to Jordan and then Togo.
Uh, شكرًا سيدي الرئيسة، شركاء. في البداية منذ أن وجد فقرة أربعتاش مكرر وأجد لدي مشكلة في التعامل مع هذه الفقرة خاصة أن هناك بعض السكوك أو الاتفاقيات الدولية تمتلك آليا قد تكون مختلفة ولا نعلم ما هي تلك الآليات التي تملكونها إضافًا أنه قد لا نكون أطرافًا بتلك الآليات أو غيرها لذلك أجد أن هنا الصياغة ما زلت تملك بعض الإبهام بنسبة ننس لذلك أجد أن توضع فقرة أربعتاش مكرر جميعها بين أقواس معكوفة وأن تضمن المقتراحات التي قدمت من زملاء الأطراف بين أقواس معكوفة أيضا داخل الفقرة يتسنى لنا مراجعة والنظر في إمكانية التعامل مع هذه الفقرة. شكرا جزيلا.
Thank you, Jordan. So I think your proposal is to put the whole 14b in brackets. Okay. We'll continue to work with the text that is now inside brackets and get more views. So I'll give the floor to Togo and then Brazil, Togo.
Merci, madame la présidente. Le Togo soutient la proposition de l'Egypte qui s'inspire du paragraphe 4 du protocole de Nagoya sur la relation entre les instruments. Nous sommes pas d'accord, nous l'avons dit hier ou avant-hier, sur les accords collectifs qui n'est pas l'intention, qui ne donne pas bien l'intention du 14b, qui est beaucoup plus la coopération et la synergie, parce que les accords collectifs supposent qu'il y a de nouveaux accords, ce qui risque de prolonger les négociations. On connaît un peu les instances dans lesquelles le débat sur liens sènnes aussi se déroule. On connaît bien ces instruments-là pour le moment. Ceux qui sont là, on les connaît, et on sait comment aussi ils fonctionnent. Donc c'est la richesse de synergie et de collaboration qui est beaucoup plus envisagée ici. Et la proportion de l'Egypte aussi permet d'éviter le double emploi, comme dit l'autre fois, de telle sorte que si c'est l'instrument du mécanisme multilatéral de la CDB, donc celui peut-être de l'un pays ou du traité international de la FAO ne va pas marcher. Je pense que c'est, on doit examiner à fond la proportion de l'Egypte. Merci, madame la co-présidente.
I'll give the floor to the last three countries, after all, the whole paragraph is in brackets now. So we have Brazil, Cote d'Ivoire, and United Kingdom. So Brazil followed by Cote d'Ivoire, and then finally, United Kingdom. And then we'll move to paragraph 14t. I see Argentina has come up as the fourth. So Brazil and then Cote d'Ivoire.
In a similar way to our previous comments, we do think that there is general agreement for the general message of this paragraph. So it would be a pity if this general agreement gets lost in the midst of other additions. Our suggestion would be to find language that preserves the general agreement that we believe it's present in this room on the general message, which is there should be mutual mutual supportiveness and coherence between international agreements that deal with ABS, that no one challenged that, no one questioned that, and this should be properly respected. So we would kindly appeal, for instance, for Japan to retire his proposition, because double payments are addressed in other parts of the document, and we would be getting into a lot of specific details here. And of course, we know that double payments, as much as several other items, are included under the umbrella of mutual supportiveness and coherence. If we start to flagging out every single aspect or element that are included, then we are going in a direction that maybe is not the best one. We do sympathize with the European proposal of rewriting the last part of the paragraph, because collective arrangement, thus, it's a bit vague. Maybe we should be a little more detailed and saying what exactly are we talking about? Because as the European Union, we are skeptical of the view that there might be some kind of very grand legal arrangement between those agreements. That's not how these things usually work. So maybe we should be more specific, but again, we are flexible in language, and I think the most important thing is that we reflect in this paragraph as well as in the rest of the text, the relative amount of agreement that we have reached, and there is a very high degree of agreement, and I think this should be reflected here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. And indeed, this is something that is coming from decision 15/9, where we have already recognized the importance of having mutual supportedness amongst the international ABS instruments. So we'll continue to collect the views. We have Cote d'Ivoire and then United Kingdom, Cote d'Ivoire.
Presidente, la Cote d'Ivoire prend la parole pour soutenir la proposition faite par l'Egypte que nous pensons bol pour la simple raison que non seulement il doit avoir coopération entre les différents instruments d'acès et autres, mais également il faudrait que ça épouse l'esprit et la lettre de la convention et du protocole de Nagoya. Donc j'adais également à tout ce que le Togo a dit par rapport à ses explications, et je ne pense pas qu'il soit pertinent de mettre le paragraphe en brac. Merci.
Thank you, Cote d'Ivoire. And I think maybe Jordan, we reconsider, considering that this is something coming from decision 15/9. And I think in this document, we are just trying to operationalize what is already in the decision. And I see that Japan has requested for the floor, so we'll come to you, hopefully, also to reconsider the proposal as based on the Brazil's comments. I'll give the floor to United Kingdom, Argentina, and then Japan, United Kingdom.
The spirit of this paragraph is really important for us here, but also for our colleagues working across other international instruments as well. I mean, ultimately, we're all in this together. It would be unfortunate, I think, if the paragraph was bracketed in its entirety. I think we would like to extend some warm words to the other forums that are also working on DSI, and I would suggest adding a small sentence at the end of the paragraph, which would read, "Other international access and benefit sharing instruments are invited to collaborate with the multilateral mechanism and streamline benefit sharing processes where appropriate." Thank you.
If you could repeat, UK?
Yeah, of course.
And where exactly you are proposing for that text to be placed?
At the end of the paragraph as it stands.
Okay.
And it would read, "Other international access and benefit sharing instruments are invited to collaborate with the multilateral mechanism, comma, and streamline benefit sharing processes where appropriate." Thank you.
Thank you, UK. Indeed, the paragraph has become longer and more complicated, and I think the intention initially was just to capture the reflection that we do need to cooperate with other international instruments, and this is in line with the decision that we already adopted. But we have captured all of the comments, and they will be reflected in the CRIP. I'll give the floor now to Argentina, Japan, and then Norway, Argentina.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to take the floor again. We do agree on the idea of this mechanism being mutually supportive with other access and benefit sharing instruments. We are not at this time comfortable yet to agree on the idea of a collective arrangement or the other similar text or alternative text that was provided in that regard, such as the one that was just proposed by the UK. So we'd need more time to reflect on that before considering whether that could be even feasible, so would ask to keep that in brackets for further consideration if it's going to stay in the paragraph. Furthermore, as I said, we do agree on the mutually supportive manner of this mechanism with other ABS instruments. We do think that there needs to be explicit mention, and we said it in earlier interventions, that this would not undermine those others. It can work in a mutually supportive way, but this is not to undermine those other ABS instruments that we already have. So we would like some explicit text to that extent to add to this para. That could be something like the provisions of the mechanism will not affect the rights and obligations of any contracting party deriving from any existing international agreement. We're flexible on working on that, on the exact language, but we do want some clarification in that regard, so that we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Argentina, for the proposals. I'll give the floor now to Japan and then Norway.
A question from Brazil, comment from Brazil. Our suggestion for the insertion of this language is to clarify the meaning of coherence, and we believe that is the intention and wish of many parties. That is why we are not in a position to withdraw our proposal. The language we proposed should be in captain bracket. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Norway.
Madam Koche, I did a little bit of yoga this morning, which keeps me flexible and adaptable. You know, for us, there is a lot of communality, difficult word in the room, on mutual supportiveness, and that's in our view the main case. A collective arrangement is just one way of, you know, opera, oh, shit, sorry. I'm struggling. Opera, it doesn't work. Making it come true, yes. So a collective arrangement and other ways of, you know, collaborating or cooperating can be initiated later, I mean, in different ways. That's not important to us. So we are happy to withdraw our proposal on collective arrangement, if that helps to craft a compromise on the whole para. Looking at Jordan as well, if that helps. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and that was the final country to request the floor. And I think maybe I'll just give one last try to Jordan, considering that there seems to be an agreement in the room that this is something that is intended to enhance that kind of cooperation and mutual supportedness, and already it's in line with what we agreed in decision 15/9. We hope that maybe you would have some flexibility and allow that we only keep in brackets those elements that need further clarification, and maybe you could follow suit with the flexibility that Norway has already initiated. Jordan, slot to Jordan.
Uh, شكرًا، سيدي الرئيسة. نحن نتحال دائما في المورون ونتفق مع ضرورة التعامل والتنسيق مع الاتفاقيات الجهة الأخرى. ربما كان السبب لوضع الفقرة بأقواس معكوفة ليس الاعتراض على عملية التعامل والتنسيق مع الاتفاقيات الأخرى ولكن كان لدينا المشكلة في صياغة النص. الصياغة لم تكون واضحة وتفيد بعملية التنسيق والتشارك مع الاتفاقيات الأخرى. فكان لدينا هذا اللبس ومع الإضافات أو المقتراحات التي كانت من الزملاء الأطراف الأخيرة أصبح الأمر أكثر تعقيدا لفهم أو عملية صياغة جديدة. فطلب وضح بين أقواس معكوفة والحفاظ على جميع المداخلات من قبل الأطراف ليتسنى لنا فقط أن نجد الصياغة الملائمة المناسبة التي تتصل مع الهدف المرجود الذي يتناغم مع الهدف القرار 15 على 9 ويتافق مع الذي نصب إليه. لذلك ما نريده الآن فقط أن نراجع النص أو أن يعكس التطلعات التي نريدها بشكل واضح سليم يمكن التعامل معه في المستقبل. ولذلك نلتسل في المورون نفهم الأمر جيدا ولا توجد لدينا في أي مشاكل في هذا الاتجاه. فقط هي أعطانا بزيد من الوقت لحصول نص أكثر رضوحا. شكرا جزيلا.
And I do agree with you that everybody has made suggestions. And I do agree with you that everybody has made suggestions saying the same thing in different ways. And maybe this is something that needs to be well clarified. And I think maybe you could come back after you have reflected on it in the CRAP. So we'll move forward to paragraph 14, Chair. And we've captured all of the comments and we do understand your explanation. So now I open the floor for paragraph 14, Chair, on the authority and guidance of the mechanism to be accountable to the conference of the parties. Any comments on this one? It seems to be straightforward, so I'll hand over to my co-chair to take us through paragraph 15. And, oh, we have India for 14, Chair. India, you have the floor.
The text which I have in front of me, I think I just want to insert, "The multilateral mechanism, including the global fund, will operate under the authority and guidance of..." and "be accountable to the conference of the parties." And "be accountable to..." Is it there? Maybe I have a different text then. So we just want to insert that.
For your comments, I don't see any more requests for the floor, so we'll move to paragraph 15 and I'll hand over to my co-chair.
Very much, Co-Chair, and thank you, everybody. So paragraph 15 has, of course, a related enclosure. You discussed paragraph 15, I think, in a very effective contact group one evening, way back, I don't know, some stage. So hopefully, your comments here will be relatively light as well. And you think this is a good reflection of the discussion that you already had. Very much welcome comments on paragraph 15. Thank you. European Union, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. You will remember that at the previous exchange this week, and I don't quite remember whether it was morning, afternoon or evening, we already expressed reservation about at this stage agreeing that the review should take place at the 18th meeting. So we do not, as such, object to it. We're not sure whether it will be possible, so if we could put that in brackets. The second comment is, there is a reference in the line four about the methodology, and it's not quite clear a methodology of what and for what purpose. So either we clarify that or I think put that in brackets for further consideration. I think that's a wider subject, in our view. Again, we're probably sort of ready to engage on the discussion what that methodology would be, but it's not clear, as a matter of fact, how we would prepare for that and what we're actually talking about here. So both of those in brackets for now. Thank you.
European Union, that's been done. I don't see any other requests to the floor, so let's move to paragraph 15 biz. Thank you. So I see the United Kingdom asking for the floor. Thank you, UK.
Thank you very much, Mr. Co-Chair. We have just a couple of amendments to this paragraph, which we will hope improves it and makes it a bit more accurate. And we propose minor changes to the footnote to accurately reflect the placeholder. And the monitoring framework contains a placeholder for questions on DSI rather than an indicator on DSI. For the binary indicators, there is one binary indicator per target. Therefore, the indicator for target 13 will cover all of the elements of target 13, not just DSI, and will be calculated on the basis of the questions on the various elements under target 13. Therefore, we propose changing this to say DSI question instead of indicator. Also, in the footnote, I have a suggestion just to make it a little bit more specific. And instead of saying reworded along the lines of, we would suggest reworded as monetary benefits received in accordance with. So that's one change. And then the second change, in reference to my point about indicator versus question. So it would read, "The monitoring framework currently contains a placeholder for..." and this is where the question comes in. For, sorry, this is where the change comes in. "A placeholder for a question on DSI under target 13, under the target 13 binary indicator." Sorry, let me repeat that to be clearer. "The monitoring framework currently contains a placeholder for a question on DSI under the target 13 binary indicator." Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Thank you very much, UK. That change keeping us accurate. Egypt, you have the floor.
One of the points that we missed in point here is the issue of adaptive management, and it needs to be recaptured, maybe to support adaptive management at the end of the phrase. Thank you.
Now, that's helpful, Egypt. Thank you. I'm just checking, we previously had a reference to adaptive management in paragraph 16. Should we reintroduce it in paragraph 16 or would you like it in paragraph 15 biz?
It should be with the review, because you are doing review to learn from what you have already done and to have flexibility. So it should be indoors, actually. Thank you.
Very much, Egypt. Let's hear from Jordan and then the EU. Jordan, you have the floor.
شكرًا جزيلا سيادة الرئيس مشارك. وندعم ما تفضط فيه المملكة المتحدة في الإشارة للمعاشرات المرتبطة بهدف 13، حيث أن هدف 13 يتحدث من إطار حول الموارد الجنية ويتحدث أيضا في جزء آخر على معلومات التسessel الرقمي. وأن المسؤولية承諾 لهذا الفريق أن يناقش معلومات التسessel الرقمي. هنا يجب التأكيد على ذلك الأمر. إضافة إلى ذلك، أود السؤال إجرائي، هل سنذهب نكمة المناقشة حول الظمائم المرفقة في البلاحق أم سنكتفي؟ لأن هناك لدينا بعض الملاحظات في الظمائم أو في الضميمة ياء إ في بعض النقاط فيها. شكرًا جزيلا.
Thank you, Jordan, very much. I really welcome comments on enclosure E now. I think that would be helpful. Do you want to make them right now or shall I take a few more interventions and come back to you?
يمكن أن أتقدمها الآن إذا كان هناك قبول من رئيستكم حول ذلك. في الضميمة ها البند زا في المثيقة العربية تتحدث عن التفاعلات والعلاقة بين الأليات المتعددة الأطراف عن المنافع الناشئة عن استخدام الموارد الجنية. وأعتقد أن هذا الأمر يحكم ضمن برتكول نقوية يتقاسم المنافع ضمن أليات محددة لا يندرج ضمن الأليات العالمية. خاصة أن القرار 15 على 9 يتحدث في الأليات العالمية على المنافع المتولدة من معلومات التسessel الرقمي وليس على المنافع المتولدة عن جميع الموارد الجنية الحاصلة ضمن إطار نقوية. لذلك أجد هذه هنا ليس مكانها الآن وخارج الإطار الذي نتحدث فيه قانونيا ضمن القرار 19 على 9. فلذلك أجد حذفها والتركيز على الأمور ذات العلاقة بمعلومات التسessel الرقمي. شكرًا جزيلا.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you for reflecting on enclosure E. That's very helpful. Thank you. European Union and then Argentina.
So am I correct to understand we commented both on 15 and enclosure E? Yes, thank you. On the, on 15, sorry, on 15 biz, sorry. That's, now I'm getting confused. We're on 15 with enclosure and 15 biz, correct? Okay, fine. On 15 biz, just to, on which we had no comments initially, and we do not have any problems with the changes to the footnote. You will recall that we asked for the deletion of adaptive management, because we were not clear that we would adaptive manage what for what purpose and in what context. And I think it's even less applicable to the monitoring framework than it is to paragraph 16. So we do not favor the inclusion on that one. Now, with regard to enclosure E, we actually are generally happy with what is there now. Just that there is something missing that we actually introduced already when we had the first round of discussion in that one. And in the context of establishing a meaningful and fair and predictable system for the disbursement of funds for all parties, based on the principle that all parties have rights and use of genetic resources, we would like to reiterate our request to include an entry M, which is the possibility of the voluntary extension of the multilateral mechanism to genetic resources in the future. I hope that's clear. I can repeat it? It's clear? Thank you.
Thank you, European Union, and I'm sorry for any confusion about enclosure E. So please, I'm very happy to keep taking interventions on 15 biz and E and paragraph 15 if necessary. Thank you. So Argentina, you have the floor.
I will refer to the enclosure as well. I was going to, I thank Jordan's delegate for bringing up the question, because I had originally asked for the floor to make that exact question. So when we discussed this in contact group, I referred to the enclosure E, to letters G and H. And at that time, I considered they could be, that there were elements that were not relevant to this, to this review of the effectiveness, and that the elements that were relevant could be probably combined into one. I think it is my understanding that the new letter L is an attempt in that regard, when it says a review of the interaction between the multilateral mechanism and any existing national arrangements, that would include the elements that are relevant from G and H. So if that is kept, I would suggest deleting G and H, because the relevant elements are already, it's redundant, it doesn't provide for information that would be important for the review. And in my mind, it is important to clearly try to think about what information would be useful for it, for the questions that we're trying to see, to answer, to see if this mechanism is working or is not working. So trying to avoid redundant information is important, because it will potentially at that time make us waste a lot of time and resources in considerations that might not provide to an answer of whether we are happy with how the mechanism is working or not. So I think in that sense, I'm okay with considering, further considering, because I understand this is an indicative list and we're not at this time agreeing to this text definitely and/or agreeing to it. But L seems to be more of an accurate description of the information or with the consideration we might want to make at that point. On the EU's request to include M, would not be in a position to agree to that, to in this. So we suggest and actually we request that it is not included. We have extensively referred to the Nagoya Protocol. We have extensively referred to our national ABS legislation. If it is necessary that I make that case and start to extensively refer to it again at this time, I can do it. But as a general remark, it would not be acceptable for us to have that consideration of an inclusion of physical genetic resources in the first review of, in the review of the mechanism that we are talking about here. On the terms of when it is going to happen, if it is going to be on the 18th, I am unclear on what the bracketing around the 18th COP 18 brings to the table in this, in the discussion of this paragraph. Maybe it is due to confusion on my part on what we are discussing, but if we are not agreeing to the text, it is text that we will consider on the overall balance of all of the elements, then I don't necessarily understand why the bracketing is there, since there is no alternative option at that stage. So we don't have alternative options here to consider. So it isn't clear to me what the bracketing around COP 18 in the paragraph actually means. So I think in, to be able to move forward, we need to be on the same page on how we are discussing this. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Argentina. That's very helpful. On the question of COP 18, I mean, I suppose, I suppose the point where we would start as co-chairs, I think, is that COP 15 agreed that the review would be at COP 18. So I might invite the European Union to come back shortly and make some observations on their intent there. I think it would be really helpful. Let's hear from Japan, Brazil and the UK. Japan, you have the floor.
Textural comment for enclosure E. Item A, biz, before list of sectors, we proposed addition of indicative, just to align with the original enclosure A. Item B, at the very end of item B, we propose the addition of inter-aerial, comma, effectiveness evaluation of each project. Thank you.
Very much, Japan. We'll bring in Brazil and the United Kingdom. Brazil.
On the enclosure, on item D, we would like to add, after multilateral mechanism, including the global fund, that would read, "An assessment of the efficiency of the multilateral mechanism, comma, including the global fund, comma, taken into account, etc." And I would also like to recall the proposal that we have put forward in the contact group, which is to add another item saying, "Information on other issues arising from new and emerging technologies that are relevant for the operation of the..." that are relevant for the operation of the MLM. Should I read it again? Can I read it again? Information on other issues arising from new and emerging technologies that are relevant for the operation of the MLM. And we would kindly request that the proposal by the European Union be in brackets also. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil, and just to be precise, that's the proposal. Physical genetic resources. Thank you, Brazil. That's very helpful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Co-Chair. I can be very quick. We'd like to support the proposal by the EU on little m. And we would just like to make one small change to little l. And that is changing the word arrangements to measures. And that's simply to fall in line with the language that we use throughout the rest of the document. I don't think we talk about national arrangements anywhere else. We talk about national measures. Thank you.
Switzerland and the EU and Togo. Switzerland.
Thank you, Co-Chair. I'll also be brief. I just quickly wanted to react to the comments made by Argentina regarding paragraph, elements G, J, G and H. So for us, these two paragraphs are important and so we would like to keep this because this concerns the interactions with the Nagoya Protocol, which are critical, I think, and also the issue of potential multiple payments. So we would like to keep this. And then I was also going to support the additional element suggested by the European Union. We think the possibility for voluntary extension of the multilateral mechanism to genetic resources in the future may be an interesting element to keep here. Thank you very much.
European Union, Togo and Norway, EU.
I think it's very clear that the issue of the voluntary extension of the multilateral mechanism to the physical genetic resources, a topic that has been under discussion from before COP 15. And I think it is the sovereign right of every party to request for an item to be retained for consideration. And therefore, I'm a little bit surprised by Argentina asking for it not being retained for consideration. I think that's not the way we work here. Of course, we respect the right of every party to ask for something to be put in brackets. That's fine. I think we quite extensively explained why we put COP 18 into brackets, but I'm happy for those who were doing something else while I was taking the floor. So I think that we explained very clearly that we did not a priori disagree with COP 18, but there were so many issues and items that were put into the discussion during this open-ended working group that we're no longer sure that this multilateral mechanism might be operational in a timeframe that would actually warrant such a review at COP 18. So this is pending the outcome of our discussions at COP 16. Having said that, I have two further small comments. I think we would agree with Argentina that G and H are to a degree similar, that they could be merged. That doesn't mean that elements would disappear. It's just that they could be merged to shorten the text. And we actually cannot agree with the Japanese proposal to add indicative at the beginning of the enclosure because we do not agree with the addition of indicative to enclosure A either. So just to be consistent here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, European Union, Togo, Norway and South Africa. Togo.
Monsieur le Président, ça fait trois jours que je soulève la même préoccupation qui revient au paragraphe et au GH que certains estiment même de supprimer. Je demande aux secrétariats comment ils se prends pour répondre au mandat que la COP 4 a confié au groupe de travail que nous sommes ici à travers le paragraphe 3 de la décision NP4. Si vous le permettez, je vais vous relire une fois encore ce paragraphe. À moins qu'il y aura un autre processus qui permettra de répondre à ce mandat là, à ce travail qui a été confié à ce groupe. Je pense que c'est dans ce groupe que ce mandat a été confié lors de la COP 4. Je lis le paragraphe 3 de la décision NP4. En terrain en outre, le processus établi à la décision 15/9 et demande au groupe de travail spécial à composition non limitée sur le partage des avantages de coulant de l'utilisation de l'ICN de faire également rapport à la conférence des parties siégeant en tant que réunion des parties au protocole Nagoya lors de sa cinquième réunion. Donc, le GH, à mon avis, nous permet de proposer quelque chose, quelque chose à la COP 5. À moins qu'il y ait un autre processus, je pourrais demander aux secrétariats de me répondre puisque j'avais eu une réponse avant-hier, je crois, mais qui n'était pas satisfaisante. Donc, à notre avis, ce paragraphe GH permet de voir les... Parce que nous, les pays qui ont signé le protocole Nagoya, veulent vraiment voir effectivement quelles sont les implications de telle sorte que en prenant les mesures au niveau national que nous entainons compte, qu'il n'y ait plus d'ambiguïté. Merci, Monsieur le co-président.
Thank you, Togo. We shall come back to the secretariat for you in a moment. Thank you, Togo. So Norway, South Africa and China. Norway, you have the floor.
So regarding the EU suggestion to delete references to COP 18 for the first review. So 15/9 para 19 says that we, well, we basically decided to review at COP 18. At the same time, no, there are factors that, you know, points in the direction that we will not maybe have come that far with the, with the, with the experiences with the operationalization of the mechanism. So there's a conversation, I think we need to have about timing there. In my view, it doesn't make sense to, to, to review before we receive the first payment into the fund. You know, so maybe there's some language that could be, could be combined with the COP 18 and the first payment, when the first payment is received into the fund. Something along those lines. Because, because I do hear the reasoning from the EU, which I think is sound. So there's a problem there we have to solve, so we don't have to review before the mechanism is, is truly operational and the funds are flowing into the fund and as well as allocated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norway. Let me hear from South Africa and China. South Africa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. South Africa supports Egypt's inclusion of adaptive management in para 15 and 16. This is linked to learning from previous experience. Also, South Africa supports Argentina's intervention to remove G and H from enclosure E. My question for G and H. For G in particular, I don't understand what any interaction means. And for H, if we are not tracking and tracing, how is this even going to be possible? How are we going to trace links in the MLM with a national access? So I don't know how this is going to work. So I would also suggest removing this, and I don't think it's necessary. But I also think if EU wants to bracket it, we can bracket it. But it's irrelevant because let's focus on the MLM.
Very much, South Africa. Let's hear from China, Zimbabwe and Jordan. China, you have the floor.
主席由于多边机制如果主席允许的话好谢谢主席 小E An assessment of the contribution of the multilateral mechanism to realization of the three objectives of the convention and the implementation of the goals and the targets of the昆明蒙特利尔Global Biodiversity Framework. 谢谢主席
Very much, China. That's very clear. Zimbabwe, Jordan and then Egypt. Zimbabwe, you have the floor.
Co-Chair, firstly, we would like to support the addition proposed by Egypt of adaptive management because that is very important. What it reads in 16 doesn't say that there will be any learning past the review. So that is important that it's added to 15 because we do want to keep learning and we want the mechanism itself to keep learning and improving. And then I would also like to make comments about the proposal or the fears of EU and Norway and others about the review process happening at COP 18 and being too soon. Well, that's exactly why we need to do it at COP 18. Because Norway is right. COP 18 might come and we will not have a cent in that mechanism. We need to review why we don't have a cent in the mechanism. We've put this mechanism and we expect it to work. So that review process needs to happen. Whether or not we have started all enjoying millions of dollars or we haven't enjoyed a single cent, we need to review why, what's happening with it so that we can then improve it and make it better. So four years is definitely enough. And I remember in the contact group, Argentina made, made it very clear that we reviewed the Nagoya Protocol and we made decisions about it four years from when we decided. So why is this different? Why is four years suddenly not enough when it was enough in the past? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zimbabwe. Let me hear from Jordan and then Egypt and Kot Devois. Jordan.
谢谢主席可能这里有异议这里有不同 在富翁Z上 讲了关于谈判我看到这里这些谈判是根据诺基亚的 Nagoya 协议和签署的合同特别是刚才我们谈到的基本上基因资源的定义所以这个事情是根据诺基亚的 protocol 而且决定是明确的我们在这里谈到的关于数据的谈判关于使用数据的数据库 在富翁H上 它谈论了谈判如何让这些捐款在忠诚的工作中我们之前在一些富翁中说过与数据的数据库所以这里 在本H上 就像谈论一部分讲论基因资源 它完全不同的谈论H 和基因资源谢谢
Thank you very much, Jordan. Egypt, Kot Devois and Australia. Egypt.
To Mr. Co-Chair, we are proposing two new points in the enclosure E. First one reads as information on any implication of the operation of the multilateral mechanism on the operation of public databases on DSI including potential implications for data governance and measure taken by such database pursuant to article 4. I will read again. Information on any implication of the operation of the multilateral mechanism on the operations of public database on DSI including potential implications for data governance and measure taken by such database pursuant to article 4. And another point that says information on the measure taken by parties pursuant to paragraph 4 bis. Information on the measure taken by parties pursuant to the paragraph 4 bis. Just I need clear instruction. When are we gonna, are we gonna discuss COP decision now? Or because I have some text proposal on that. So I'm seeking your guidance.
Egypt, we will get to that any moment. Thank you very much. We'll discuss that. Let me hear from Kot Devois, Australia and the EU. Kot Devois.
谢谢主席 18 COP 简单地说是很多和像埃及说的和利用到的对于那些连接的部分我想举个例子我们分析了一个文件是一个地区性的项目资源被采集、排序结果的排序他们发现通过这种使用这些数据被保存在了数据库 我们应该怎么做呢? 因此我认为谢谢
Thank you, Kot Devois. Australia and the EU. Australia.
And I'd like to thank our distinguished colleague from Jordan for his explanation on... And I'd like to thank our distinguished colleague from Jordan for his explanation on G and H. And I wasn't going to weigh into the debate, but I think after that explanation, we'd also like to retain it with Switzerland and as per Togo before me. And I think this is important for, what it made me realize is that for those of us who haven't ratified the Nagoya Protocol and with the implementation of the multilateral mechanism, this information is actually going to be really valuable to see how we can improve that or do it and make sure that they are aligned for countries such as Australia. Thank you, Chair.
Australia, European Union.
Being allowed to come back once again, I think that the intervention by our colleague from Jordan exactly underscores why we need to retain G and H because there are different understandings of those issues related to the relationship between the Nagoya Protocol and DSI. So I think if we are to review what we're doing, we actually need to take that into account. So I think that definitely needs to be retained. Looking at the enclosure again, I think that there is certainly an interaction also between little G and L, and there could also be a merging or a bringing together of those elements in that regard. Let me also just make a short comment on the Zimbabwe reference to the review of the Nagoya Protocol, and perhaps the Secretariat could answer that one. To understanding, no review of the Nagoya Protocol took place. There was also only a discussion on the basis of the first interim reports being submitted. But I think maybe the Secretariat can clarify which understanding is correct. Also, I heard a massive amount of new additions being made by Egypt, which I think we are in no position to process here. So I think I trust that all those new proposals I've just put in brackets and being put forward in that regard because that spares me from sort of always taking the floor and comment on them one by one. I think this is sort of an issue that now for housekeeping, we are at the late stage of the meeting, and I think all those proposals coming in, including our own, of course, we are in no position to actually have an in-depth discussion of them. And I think we're just collecting all those brilliant ideas for future reference. Thank you.
European Union, and as a point of housekeeping, that is right. So new ideas are being reflected in square brackets. Thank you all. And that concludes our discussion on fifteen, fifteen BIS and enclosure E. With your indulgence, just give us one moment to confer. There's a couple of issues we want to wrap up before we move to sixteen. One moment. Thank you.
Mike? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. And let me see if I can address what I think are two aspects to it or two questions. So from Togo and from the European Union. So in Montreal, the meeting of the parties to the Nagoya Protocol, of course, endorsed the decision fifteen nine and asked that the report of this working group would be presented to the meeting of the parties of the Nagoya Protocol at its meeting this year in Kali. So that will happen. This report will also be transmitted to the Conference of the Parties serving as the meeting of the parties, so at COP five. It's, of course, is then up to the meeting of the parties in Kali to decide how to respond to that. And of course, in doing that, it'll also be informed by COP sixteen's consideration of this item. Regarding the timetable for the assessment and review under the Nagoya Protocol, this is due to take place at COP six, which is concurrent with COP seventeen. So that would happen before the review of this multilateral mechanism, which COP fifteen decided in decision fifteen nine should take place at COP eighteen. I hope that addresses the points raised. Thank you, Co-Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretariat. Colleagues, another point to cover with you is on paragraph fifteen BIS. We have closed the conversation on paragraph fifteen BIS. We won't open that. I just want to recall that this working group was invited by SUBSTA twenty six. You'll recall SUBSTA met in Nairobi. So SUBSTA invited this working group to develop options for the indicators on the sharing of benefits from the use of DSI. And of course, what I think the intent behind the SUBSTA ask on this working group was to ensure that any findings that we had at this working group could be sent to COP in order that the discussions that we've had here could be considered alongside the discussions on the monitoring framework at COP. In order for that to happen, obviously, this working group needs to communicate something to COP on the monitoring framework. So effectively, what we will do is we will take the footnote that you've agreed in fifteen BIS, and as we prepare the CRP this afternoon, we will turn that into an operative paragraph, which will be a recommendation of the working group to the COP to consider what we've concluded on the monitoring framework. So it's a very simple linguistic change. It's one verb, and we will move it up into the right part of the decision. I hope that will be acceptable, but we can have time to discuss that later with you all. Thank you very much. Everyone, I'll hand over to my co-chair for paragraph sixteen.
Thank you all, and also thank you for the spirit in which we are working. I think if we continue like this, we might really be within our time. So we've got to the last paragraph, paragraph sixteen, which is basically about indicating what we'll do with the outcomes of the review with regards to the MLM. So I would open the floor for any comments to improve this further. Okay, I see EU, you have the floor.
I mean, just to be coherent with our position, I think we would put eighteen, the eighteenth meeting into brackets. I think, again, in the spirit that we need to understand whether we will be in the position to actually conclude anything on the operation and the efficiency of the fund and the multilateral mechanism at the eighteenth meeting. Sort of depending on the outcome of our discussion at COP sixteen, this will be deemed possible by us or not. The second question is, the mandate of this working group is actually to define the operational modalities. I don't think we are actually asked to design something. So we have a question mark about the insertion of or design. Maybe it should be enough to say to adjust the modalities. And then at the end, I have a horizontal editorial question. The mandate of our working group is actually to work on DSI on genetic resources. And throughout the text, we always then use the shorthand of DSI. So either, there are several ways to deal with it. Either we actually add on genetic resources every time we talk about DSI, or we put a footnote into the title that's saying that the use of DSI in this decision is to be understood as meaning DSI on genetic resources, just to be consistent throughout the text. It would help to avoid any misunderstandings in the future. Thank you very much.
EU, and I think we'll be consistent every time we use DSI and then also include on genetic resources because that is within the mandate under which we are supposed to have this discussion. All right, with that, we have concluded all the paragraphs in the annex, and thank you very much. I think we have really done a good job of keeping our time and also being very specific on the comments that we want to address. And now, I think we had a number of requests with regards to the draft recommendation to COP, and I see Egypt had indicated that they had some textual proposals to make with regards to that and already requesting the floor. So Egypt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Koachar. Just to, first, because we asked adaptive management to be added in para sixty, so this is already captured. With regard to our proposed text to be included in the COP decision, first, a para to be included in the preamble or paragraph, and it reads as follows. Recognizing the lack of accountability, transparency, and inclusive governance in existing public databases as well as data sharing practices that do not align with the International Convention on Access and Benefit Sharing, which limits fair and equitable benefit distribution from the use of DSI and acknowledging that insufficient national capacity in developing countries further constrain their ability to benefit fairly and equitably from these resources. The COP decision. So it would be point two. Request the Executive Secretary to establish a database for digital sequence information under the clearinghouses mechanism for facilitating fair and equitable sharing of the benefit arising from the use of DSI. Three. Decide that the DSI database shall a) enable safe, secure, accountable, and legitimate method of making DSI on genetic resource and associated traditional knowledge publicly available and with the prior and informed consent of the provider of the genetic material from which DSI is generated and to secure benefit in line with this decision. B) Provide facilities to developing countries' party that lack capacities to generate, store, share, and use DSI on genetic resources and to receive benefit from such use in accordance with HAB system. C) Support non-monetary benefit sharing by enabling capacity building, technology transfer, training opportunities, and information sharing among all parties, particularly developing country parties. Four. Request the Executive Secretary to report on the progress of this action at the eighteenth meeting of the Conference of the Party. Five. Decide to develop a specific framework for sharing non-monetary benefit for the sector listed enclosure A based on need identified by parties. Six. Request the Executive Secretary to facilitate the development process incorporating inputs from parties and relevant stakeholders. Seven. Invite parties to submit their identified needs and relevant information. Eight. Request the draft framework to be presented to SUBSTA for review with a view to adoption at the eighteenth meeting of the Conference of the Party. I will submit that in writing to you. Thank you, Madam Koachar.
All of those are proposals for the potential COP decision, right? All right. So I'll now give the floor to the EU.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Just have a little question for clarification. We still have comments on enclosures A and D. When would we have the opportunity to make those? Thank you.
All right, EU, just consulting amongst ourselves because I think when we had the discussions on the paragraphs, we were taking them together with the enclosures. And also during the contact groups, we really felt like we gave much time to the discussion on the enclosures somehow. But if it's very pertinent that you make the contributions, I think we would be willing to take them now and then we'll go back to the discussion on the decision that we were just on. So EU, please. On the enclosures and specific paragraphs within the enclosures that you want to provide those comments.
Thank you very much for your indulgence, Chair. Enclosure A, as we have said, we do not agree with the inclusion of the word indicative in the title. And for us, the text, the title should be a list of sectors or subsectors that directly or indirectly benefit from the use of digital sequence information on genetic resources for their commercial activities. And then we go on to point C, where I think after biotechnology, we would insert the reference to industries. I think that's what we would yeah, and suggesting to delete what comes thereafter in point C. On enclosure D, I think we do agree that this is a group that will probably have to provide technical advice and guidance on the remaining and unresolved issues. And therefore, I think it's useful to use the terminology that we usually use in the CPD for such groups. So I think it is an ad hoc technical expert group So I think it is an ad hoc technical expert group on limited composition. I think that should be sort of clearly expressed throughout the text and should also be then, in the same way, referred to in the operative paragraph of the text. And I think that there is an omission, I think, in paragraph one, where I think in the last line, we would need to insert the word "review" by the Conference of the Party at this seventeenth meeting. Now, going back to enclosure A, there is a very clear link to the options under paragraph two. And I think we have sort of had some exchanges on how to ensure that users or that actually do not benefit from the use of entities that do not benefit from the use in DSI in their commercial activities would be able to make sure that they don't have to contribute. And from our point of view, the option B would track the title of the enclosure A, i.e. has to say users that directly or indirectly benefit from the use of DSI in their commercial activities. And then we would have a, probably a "to bis" that would actually ensure that there is this opt-out possibility. And we would like to see that sort of explicitly mentioned. And it would be entities active in the sectors mentioned in enclosure A that do not directly or indirectly benefit from the use of DSI in their commercial activities will have the option to provide information in this regard, which basically would be that they would provide for a mechanism where those who are engaged in the sectors that are listed in enclosure A would say, yes, I'm active in this sector, but I know that in my commercial activities we do not benefit directly or indirectly from the use of DSI, which then would actually mean that those companies would not have to share monetary or non-monetary benefits. And I think that's quite important to add that to the overall equation. It is linked to option B, obviously. So it can be a sub-paragraph of two or, I think, somehow linked to option B in the way that the EU Co-Chairs deem necessary. I think those were my additional comments and suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. I see more requests for the floor. The intention was not to have another round on the enclosures. That was heavily discussed in the contact groups. We were hoping that we would move forward and at least have a chance to look at the proposed decision. So I would request the parties that are requesting for the floor that, please, if it's something that maybe you already raised and it was already dealt with through the contact groups and also in the previous paragraphs, maybe if you could allow that we move on, noting that there will be many more chances in future to continue this discussion. However, I think I'll give you the floor and hoping that maybe it's not reopening paragraphs that we have already discussed extensively already. So, United Kingdom followed by Japan.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this paragraph. I'm not sure we, or this enclosure, I'm not sure we had a complete opportunity to comment on it in its current form. I would also like to comment on the reference to indicative, as the EU did. And I think it's really dependent on the option that's selected in paragraph two. So in a slightly strange turn of events, having suggested the word indicative in the first instance, I would suggest bracketing my own insertion until we know how paragraph two settles. And then just more generally, on the examples of the sectors or the subsectors within the sectors, I think it's important to recognize that the list isn't fully comprehensive and it could be misleading. And it will be most likely that this list will have to evolve and develop over time. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair.
Thank you, UK. And indeed, I think paragraph two does recognize that the list should be kept under review. Japan and then Brazil. Japan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On enclosure A, we think "rely on" is very important. As we discussed in the contact groups, some companies are heavily using DSI, but other companies may be using very little or randomly. So what we focus is the companies relying on the use of DSI. For this reason, we need to keep "rely on", in bracket. Item C, we propose the word "from such as" in the first line up to "and", to cross out the word "from such as", agricultural technology, up to "and", then again, insert "and", after research, comma, and cross out in the third line from support activities up to the very end. We have submitted this textual change in writing already. In enclosure D, we would like to reserve the right to comment this part. We haven't discussed this enclosure E in detail yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Japan. Point taken. Brazil followed by Chile.
enclosure D, we had raised our concern with the possibility that such an important task be confined to an expert group in more general terms that this process not be inclusive enough. So we are really concerned to see that. We want this to be reflected in the text and we also, we cannot really conceive how with ten technical experts nominated by parties, for instance, could deal with a process that would have such wide and far-reaching implications as the allocation of methodology. We do not think it's appropriate for political and technical reasons. And we have made this point clear. We want, we request this to be reflected in the text because this has implications for the whole of enclosure D. The format, and not only the format, if it would be a working group or an expert group, and in this case, the composition, we do have comments on the composition. Because of the nature of the exercise at hand, we would need to tackle this with more attention than currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. Chile followed by Canada.
Gracias, señora Presidenta. Pido su indulgencia para poder referirme sobre el enclosure A y el párrafo dos. Entiendo que la idea es avanzar, pero al mismo tiempo creo que no hemos tenido tiempo suficiente para hacer propuestas en estos elementos. En relación al párrafo dos, opción B, nuestra sugerencia es incorporar nuevamente la palabra "highly" en "rely". Eso significa, nuestra propuesta en concreto es companies in sectors that highly rely on the use of DSI. Y esto está conectado con una propuesta respecto al enclosure A para justamente buscar cumplir el mismo objetivo de la propuesta planteada por la Unión Europea, aunque si bien no es exactamente la misma, intentamos cumplir el mismo objetivo de identificar claramente aquellas empresas que contribuyen, deben contribuir debido a que usan de manera intensiva y no de manera marginal productos o servicios vinculados a DSI. En concreto, la propuesta respecto al enclosure A es la siguiente: agregar un numeral tres, que diga: Companies in the above-mentioned sectors or subsectors may be excluded when they demonstrate that do not highly rely on DSI. Muchas gracias.
Chile. Chile, it has been captured as proposed. I'll give the floor now to Canada, followed by Uganda. Canada.
Thank you, Co-Chair. As with others, we don't consider that we've had sufficient time to discuss enclosure D. We think there's a lack of clarity on the development and timeline for formula and who is best placed to do this work. So we'd like to reserve our consideration of this expert group or our TEG proposal until COP16 and would like it to be bracketed. Thank you.
Thank you, Canada. Uganda followed by Colombia.
Thank you, Co-Chair. We think that pending resolution of the options in paragraph two, we need to bracket enclosure A, the entire enclosure A. So we are requesting that enclosure A be bracketed as well as in enclosure E, the para that reads "a bis", a bis. We need to bracket that one as well. Thank you, Co-Chair.
Introducing more brackets. I'll give the floor to Colombia and then Argentina.
Presidenta, Colombia antes de reiterar algunas solicitudes que realizó en el enclosure A. En la primera es en el literal "A", solicitamos eliminar lo, el texto después de pharmaceuticals. Entonces, digamos, la idea es terminar la oración en pharmaceuticals y eliminar "life science research". Frente al punto "C", igualmente preferimos la presentación original donde estaba listado una lista de subsectores. Entonces, el leo como quedaría, el literal "C", plant, animal breeding, and agricultural biotechnology, full stop. Frente al literal "E", solicitamos la eliminación completa. Y esos serían los comentarios frente al enclosure A. Frente al enclosure E, como lo han solicitado algunas otras partes, consideramos que debe quedar completamente abierto porque no tuvimos la oportunidad de revisar y discutir los términos de referencia de este posible órgano encargado de revisar cuál sería la fórmula propuesta. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Colombia. I'll now give the floor to Argentina, followed by Cuba.
Gracias, señora Co-Presidenta. Quiero referirme a la sección enclosure A en relación a la propuesta de incluir en el texto las palabras "directly" or "indirectly", preferiríamos por el momento mantenerlo entre corchetes porque no consideramos claro que se podría entender por directa o indirectamente dependiente del uso de DSI. Entonces, hasta que tengamos más claridad sobre ese punto, preferiríamos dejarlo entre corchetes. Asimismo, como nos referimos en el grupo de contacto sobre este tema, consideramos que el mejoramiento vegetal debe ser abordado por TIRFA, que prevé acuerdos estándar de transferencia de material, que en su implementación pueden incluir DSI, y cuenta también con un mecanismo multilateral para la distribución de beneficios. La ampliación del anexo de ese mecanismo multilateral se encuentra en negociación en este momento. Las negociaciones en TIRFA en este momento incluyen discusiones sobre DSI y consideramos que el mecanismo que estamos discutiendo no debe presjuzgar el resultado de las negociaciones en otros foros. Por eso solicitamos que de no haber consenso en eliminar plant, breeding, and crop modification research, las mismas sean puestas entre corchetes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Argentina. I'll give the floor now to Cuba, followed by China and then Egypt.
Sobre el enclosure C, realmente hemos estado en varios momentos hablando de la inclusión de estos nuevos términos que no son familiares para algunos, que necesitan mayor comprensión, desarrollo, y discusión. Como estoy hablando de biodiversity richness, algunos se han expresado muy, digamos, vehemente, otros no tanto. Yo creo que no tenemos tiempo suficiente para una asimilación plena de este concepto y su vinculación con el proceso en sí mismo. Y me cuesta un poco de trabajo verlo al mismo nivel del que está en el inciso B de capacity needs, que es, yo creo que es algo que es objetivo. Yo pienso que este desarrollo de los criterios para la asignación de financiamiento debería concentrarse en la necesidad de capacitación. Y si es posible eliminar el biodiversity richness, y que bueno, surja en la discusión, pero no como primer elemento para tener en cuenta en el debate. Una cuestión de ordenar un poco el peso que tiene cada punto en la evaluación. O sea, en ese sentido, sugeriría eliminarlo y que surja en la discusión, si alguna parte lo entiende, pero sí concentrar el análisis en las necesidades de capacidades, teniendo en cuenta, bueno, lo que se dice, las circunstancias de los países en desarrollo. Eso es en cuanto al enclosure C. En cuanto al B, el "I", mejor dicho, del review, el denominado "a bis", que para mí es "B", que es totalmente diferente al otro, creo que hay que verlo en relación con el anexo A que hablaba en su párrafo dos, que la lista estaría en revisión. Entonces, a los efectos de este proceso, que habría que hacer o en dos años o en cuatro, según se acuerde, ese review, que sería una actualización, o sea, lo que estoy intando es a tener un verbo claro, porque incluso la propia redacción indica de tener en cuenta el desarrollo. Yo creo que la actualización es algo que debemos estar intando desde ahora, porque muchas veces hemos dicho que en este proceso, el avance tecnológico nos va a estar imponiendo constantemente reajuste a todo lo que hemos estado diseñando aquí. Entonces, yo creo que la acción de actualizar el listado es una acción clave, que puede incluso modificar muchas de las cosas que hemos estado discutiendo.
Thank you, Cuba. I'll give the floor now to China, followed by Egypt.
My发言 will be very short. The Chinese side supports the proposal to remove D. Request the COP16 discussion. The second suggestion of the Chinese side is about removing D. The Chinese side supports the suggestion of removing G.
Thank you, Egypt, followed by Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. Just a clarification, because we already discussed many of the items under enclosures and we put forward concrete text proposal in the contact group. We were told that they will be included in the CRP. And now are we engaging again in this exercise? I mean, should we put them forward again? Or I'm seeking your guidance, because many of the enclosure, we already discussed that in the contact group and we have been informed that we're going to have a CRP that we are going to discuss. But now you are opening the enclosure again and I'm not sure are we engaging in rediscovering the enclosure or I'm seeking your guidance on that.
Like I had indicated, it's not our intention to restart the discussion. Like I had indicated, it's not our intention to restart the discussion that we already had. And that's why I had encouraged parties to, if it's really pertinent. And I think for enclosure A and enclosure D, many parties felt that maybe the discussion was not as extensive as I was expecting. That's why I was able to accommodate additions or comments to enclosure A and enclosure D. However, I intend to close that discussion considering that we only have only one party request right now, and then we'll move forward. So I'll give the Republic of Korea, and that's the last party with regards to the enclosures, so we can move forward. Republic of Korea.
Madam Co-Chair, regarding enclosure A, use of DSI is still under discussion, and it isn't clear whether the opinions of stakeholders have been sufficiently reflected. And we believe that a single study was not sufficient to understand all types of DSI use in individual industries. I would request to have the entire enclosure A in bracket. Thank you.
Thank you. That's noted. Okay, so that concludes the discussion on the enclosures. But before we do, I would like to give a chance to IPOC 1164 as the last speaker with regards to this discussion. IPOC 1164.
Chair, I'm speaking on behalf of the IIFB. In enclosure C subsection B, we would like to see recognition of indigenous peoples and of local communities embodying traditional lifestyles. Within the initial formula of allocation, we suggest the wording could read as follows. B: Capacity needs taking into account the circumstances of developing countries, in particular, the least developed countries and small island developing states, those with economies in transition, and indigenous peoples as well as local communities from all regions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. With that, we have concluded the discussion on the annex and we'll move forward. All of the elements you have given us, they will be reflected and we'll be able to reflect them in the CRP document that will come up. All right, so we'll move forward. We were already discussing the COP decision. Okay, I forgot to ask for party support for the IPOCC. I see there were a lot of parties eager to support, so there goes a number of supports from parties for the IPOCC addition. Thank you very much. And then we'll move on with regards to the discussion on the COP decision. We just received a list of proposals from Egypt on what would form part of the COP decision. And I'd like to open the floor for any reflections on the proposals or if there are parties that want to have some of the proposals reflected in the COP decision. I see EU.
And I think it's late in the game, so we won't have the time to go into detail. So I think we have no objection to with these proposals to be reflected in the report, and they would be entirely bracketed. Thank you.
Thank you, EU. I don't see any more requests from parties with regards to the COP decision. So we will take into consideration the proposals from Egypt in brackets as requested by EU. Okay, now I see Argentina. Argentina.
Co-Chair, but very much in the same rationale as the EU. We also think that probably we will have to work a lot on the COP decision per se at COP. So probably we will come back on it afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are also happy with that because we also want to move forward. So with this, we have concluded the discussion on the non-paper, and we'll move forward to the next steps. I'll hand over to my co-chair.
Thank you, Co-Chair, and thank you, everyone. Oh, we did it. Very good. So, well done. Good job. So one further issue before we take a break. So you'll recall earlier there was a discussion about how to reflect in or around paragraph 12. In paragraph 12, we have a discussion about what kinds of function the fund host should perform. And there was a divergence of views on how we should reflect who the fund host could or should or might be. And there was also recognition, of course, that the Advisory Committee on Resource Mobilization overlaps, if you like, with some aspects of that question. So we'll establish a small group discussion over the lunch break. The mandate of that small group, please, is to prepare draft text, excuse me, for the CRP regarding the need to identify in future the host of the global fund, respecting the ongoing mandate of the ACRM regarding the adequate entity to review and disperse the revenue generated by the mechanism. I mean, I can read that. I will read that again. We will also send that via WhatsApp to lots of you, let's be honest. But to prepare draft text for the CRP regarding the need to identify in future the host of the global fund, respecting the ongoing mandate of the ACRM regarding the adequate entity to review and disperse the revenue generated by the mechanism. So given the timing constraints that we're working under, we would like to request an oral report, so a spoken report back from that group at the next meeting of the COW. I'd like to request Canada to give us that report, and we will take that report in the next meeting of the COW. The room is the Morocco room, which has space for 60. That is CR6. It sounds very nice, the Moroccan. I didn't know there was a Moroccan room. Very good. It's nice. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much, Morocco, for your hospitality. And I see the European Union requesting the floor.
I may not have been attentive enough, so when exactly should people go to CR6? When are we allowed to go to Morocco?
Well, I'll defer to the honorable delegate from Morocco to answer that. Two o'clock, please. Thank you very much. The, I see some other parties requesting the floor. Let me just check. Argentina, you've requested the floor.
Maybe just a small clarification on your request of the small group. What do you exactly mean with "in the future" in your proposal? At least to me, it seems a bit restrictive. Thank you.
So my understanding of my wording is the need, so it's the need to identify in future the host of the global fund, respecting the ongoing mandate of the ACRM. My sense, my sense is that it would be prejudicial of us in the next three hours to determine the host of the fund, given that that is self-evidently also within the mandate of the ACRM. Is that clear, Argentina?
So my understanding of what you are saying is that "in the future" means not prejudging the ACRM, but not after COP16, which was my fear from your presentation. Thank you.
Argentina, that's a very good question, and I'm glad we clarified that. Egypt, you have the floor.
The issue is that the Morocco room is the African group, Morocco room is the African group room. And we, our leader already agreed that we are going to have a meeting there. So...
Well, I am very embarrassed, Egypt. Thank you for telling us. That's very, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to intrude on your meeting. I'm so sorry. Just that we go, well, let me check. Is anyone using CR3 at two o'clock? CR3 on the first floor. Thank you very much. So CR3 at two o'clock. Thank you all very much. Now, on the basis of that discussion, we will work now to produce for you a CRP. The CRP will be available shortly. Once the CRP has been made available, we will place, we will put on the monitors the time that we will reconvene in the COW. We will have a discussion of the CRP in the committee of the whole, and then we will forward the CRP to plenary as an L doc. So please watch the monitors, and we will see you shortly. Thank you all very much. Very good job.